Call a meeting to order. Begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the people of which we stand, and to our own. Ms. D, would you please call the roll?
Georgia Holmes.
Good morning.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Marty Meyer.
Here.
Carleen Kane.
Here.
Sam Howard.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Carol Anne Schwarzenbach.
Present.
Skyler Metzl.
Okay, moving on, we have, I just want to remind everybody, if you do have a conflict of interest with any of the items that we are considering tonight, please make it known. And I will accept the motion to approve the agenda. And I would ask that it be amended for executive session to include legal personnel and legal.
I'll make that motion to include legal in approving the agenda. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda with the change adding legal to the executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in your packet the minutes from the July 17 meeting. I would accept the motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes from the 17th July council meeting.
No, it's Marty.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I wasn't looking out there.
There any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in front of you the bills in between. I'll accept the motion to accept the bills in between.
I'll make the motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have in your packet the current claims. I'll accept the motion to approve the current claims.
Motion to approve the current claims.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You also have listed in your package the Wells Fargo credit card charges. I accept the motion to approve those charges.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit cards.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the credit card charges. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, we'd ask, is there any communications from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the update for the summer recreation program, Kathy.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Laura. Can you hear?
It's on. It's on and ready. Can we get here you Kathy, thank you.
My name's Kathy Rinn, and I was absolutely delighted to be director for summer recreation program this year. I think the summer rec program is a great asset for this community. Provides wonderful introduction, continuing exposure to hands-on activities that gets these kids moving, creative, inspired, and provides a platform for cooperation and team skills. The biggest statement I heard in reference to this program, I'm new to the community, was it's all about the kids. And that's true, it's really cool. We offered 12 activities with 597 participants. Art is normally offered, so that would make 13, but we canceled because we couldn't find an instructor. As a saying, last year, we were continuing to have new tier pricing. The lowest cost for our program was $7 and the highest 30. And I am looking at this a lot, sorry, I'm trying not to read it, but I'm trying to be fast. I think there were some added challenges this year with summer recreation because of the creation of the 501 baseball improvement fund. Some of you are here for that, and thank you. And the state of transition that the city is in with Mayor Cotty and Nolan's leaving. I think as a result, there were a couple of management aspects that did not get addressed as much as I would like. But the support with the city staff, Ms. D, the city parks, and the community, Chris Hansen at the plunge, everybody was, it was just phenomenal, so thank you for that. I have to mention, as far as programs, baseball and tee ball, because of that improved improvement fund that was established, and the field and lights improvement was a huge asset. They did the shadowing competitive league again in Nebraska. And this year, the teams did come over here, so we actually hosted games, which to me, I was actually over there one day and waiting on an assistant to come so that I could do some paperwork with them. And the people just got out of the cars booing and ahhing over the view, the fields, the lights, it was just a great hit. So I think that was a huge project that was worth it. Oh, and then the instructors and the assistants also mentioned that they had very favorable comments made. Being new to the community and being involved with recreation all my life, I just want to springboard to a couple of recreation instances that occurred. I've had a lot of people mention, okay, several, mention to me, what about summer recreation, or what about recreation in winter? What about adult classes as far as learning how to swim? You know, being the newbie on the block, I've been in other areas where you see people come in and they want to say, this is the way it should be done. And so I've been trying to find a way to communicate effectively that I think there may be good reason to explore more recreation in Hot Springs. I understand the dollar amount, we don't want to be in the red. So along that lines, those lines, the tennis courts are just refinished, pickleball lines are done. I'm a big tennis player, don't know about pickleball, but want to learn. Talked with Mayor Cotty a couple weeks ago about more possibilities for recreation, and he's open to ideas. He's been a little busy, so we haven't followed all that. I think that, I don't know, today this morning at 10:30, I got an email from April Rhodes, who is here tonight, right back there. And I just thought it was very timely. She is part of Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative, but her statement in the email was that she was not making this email as part of that group, that her ideas were hers personally. And that she was part of that group specifically to get kids and families outside and active. And she feels that this is also the city's goal, the summer recreation. She wants to be supportive personally and explore options with this group as far as building a cohesive relationship slash partnership. I think Nolan, in his exit interview with the Star, I commented to him how much I liked the fact that one of the things he liked the most about his position here was that, and I actually quoted it, I would hate to misquote Nolan, "The positive changes the city has been able to make throughout town by collaborating with private citizens, organizations, and businesses." The improvement fund is an example of that, the baseball improvement fund, and several other things that occurred. I think that the area is ripe for more partnership. So, in closing, I tend to talk too much. Along with the changes in the city of Hot Springs government staff, we also have the city council members. I would ask, can we explore realizing more recreation potential in Hot Springs? And I'm wondering if you can expand your vision as to what the recreation program can become in a true and viable partnership with the community, even if we went nine months, or, you know, entertained a couple months in the winter, January, February, after the holidays? I don't know, but I'm willing to explore with you, if you are. Do you have any questions?
I could, you had mentioned there were a couple issues that weren't addressed. Would you like to expand on, share your thoughts with us?
When I look at the program becoming more viable, to use a good word, and get it a little bit more towards the black, I think there are some accountability issues as far as inventory, as far as procedure and policy. It's a basic honoring that goes both ways of all the people that are involved with the program, along with the community. There's programs across the country that are city and county recreation programs that are making money. I don't think that the idea here with the city is to make money, but it's definitely not to go into the hole significantly every year. I would think. And doing partnerships with people like April and her group, you know, it's already been shown that Hot Springs can do that, so. And I've lived in small towns all my life, one, for example, for 30 years. So it is doable.
When you talk about making money, do you feel like the fees that are charged are appropriate for the benefit of the kids?
No way.
They're too high?
Oh, no way. For example, the swimming program in Rapid, I did some checking, is, oh gosh, I wish I could quote it exactly. I want to say 75, but I think I'm confusing that with baseball. I know that it's at more than twice what we charge, and it's a two-week program. We've been three to four-week program for 12 bucks. 10 or 12 bucks, I'm sorry, don't have more memories. Baseball, shadowing is 75, and we charge 30. We did come up with an issue of umpires this year, of having to pay them per game, which is $30 a game. Before Nolan left, I did ask him to propose some amounts. He proposed that that go from $30 for baseball to 45. Majors games require a little bit more specific umpiring, so I'm wondering if maybe the majors could be charged 45, you know? The other proposals he did were $3 to $5, which I think is amazingly affordable and very much in touch with, this has been a great program for a lot of years, but it does need to get a little bit more realistic.
Thank you. I hate to interrupt, but we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15. So at this time, I'd like to call that public hearing to order. And Kathy, would you please stay around if there's additional questions? And I've got some comments also. This public hearing is to discuss and propose changes to the sections of our zoning ordinance that pertain with the regulation of adult-oriented businesses in Hot Springs. And I'd ask Kim to come forward and give an opening statement of what we're looking at exactly here.
Hi. This public hearing is a little bit different than we do, if you see in the ordinance section, we're going to be looking at a first reading court ordinance that affects three different chapters in the overall ordinance. But the way that the zoning ordinance reads is that you have to have a public hearing in the planning and zoning commission and at the city council level. So what we're doing is we're breaking out the zoning section to get this public hearing together. The ordinance itself is all encompassing. It covers three different chapters that deal with the idea of an adult-oriented business. Right now, if an adult-oriented business came in, they would have the right to go anywhere that any other business would. No restrictions. And the only restriction that we did have was that once they were in, the police would have to determine how much of a person's body was showing at any given time. So there was a lot of intense studying there. Although they might not have thought that was such a bad idea, it really didn't work towards our goals as a community. So what this ordinance change does is systematically say where those types of uses are allowed because by constitutional right, we can't say you're not allowed in our town. But we limit it to certain places, and it gives the council the authority to, one, the distances between different types of uses is regulated. And it's straight off of the codified law from the state of South Dakota. And we use their recommendations. And you know, so far from a school, a church, hospital, residential community, playground. So there's certain distances, they have to be away. And there are places in our community where it would actually fit. That was the other test that we have to provide. We also then through licensing, we allow the background check for our other licenses. We didn't raise the cost of this license, so that we're treating those businesses the same as we would any other business. And so that would be upheld as well. And then we also allowed a special use permit to be issued for when that type of business, if and when they would ever come, would come before you as a group, and you could decide and work with them on ours, the visual nature of the business. And some of those things that really are the outline issues that are involved with adult-oriented businesses from the outside. So those were the types of things that you could manage there. But like I said, for this public hearing itself, it is just for the zoning part. The zoning part is the section that says where it can be and the distances that are required. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Hey, thank you, Kim. I think one of the things that needs to be pointed out here that what we're looking to is to not allow adult-oriented businesses in the general commercial district, nor in the mixed-use district. And the only place upon review, as Kim described, could be in the highway service district. Do any of you on the council have any questions or comments?
I appreciate that you brought this to our attention, because I think it was very vague before.
Is there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, hearing done, are there any further comments from the council?
The highway service district, that's out by the bypass, right?
It's the...
Yeah, that's the primary area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And there's no action to be taken, although we will be considering first reading of the ordinance later on. Kathy, I'd ask you to come back to the mic and take any other questions concerning the summer recreation program. Any of you on the council have any questions for Kathy?
Hi. You said there are 597 students that you worked with this year, participants. Is that up or down from last year? Or, I'm sorry, I don't know, I actually have that written down. That is 40 less. The interesting thing is, the big ones, baseball, and like gymnastics went from 140 last year to 172 this year. Baseball went from 30 last year to 51 this year. So there wasn't, obviously there's 40 less, but there wasn't a huge change. But we love to see when the bigger charged programs go up. I mean, you know, trying to look at this, not only it's all about the kids, but also for longevity for the program.
I like your ideas about including others than children in this, in the summer.
Yes.
So adults and anyone that's interested in saying, learning to do tennis or whatever. So I appreciate you bringing that to us.
The median age here is 50. And from what I've read and seen, you know, pickleball and tennis, but definitely pickleball and swimming can be done into your 90s. Gosh gee, let's go with that.
So adult swimming lessons would be real big?
I would hope, you know? I mean, if we don't try, we're not going to know. But with this amazing, I mean, I'm a big fan of the plunge, to have a year-round indoor facility that's heated with a winter like we have, which I love the winter too, it's one of the reasons I live here.
Yeah, I agree. And you are right, Rapid City does charge about 75 for two weeks, because my daughter lives up there.
Okay. And the biggest concern I had, being a swimmer in a WSI in the past, was the program at four weeks, to me, is a little too long. Because we do go with American Red Cross requirements. But to go three weeks, to me, is a little more realistic for Hot Springs and the red program.
Yeah, because people travel.
Yes.
And they leave before they're finished.
Yes.
So good, thank you.
Go ahead, Marty.
Of course, you had mentioned winter, and is there, I'm not sure if this is for Kathy or for the council too, when summer rec is planned and organized, once it's shut down in summer, is there any meetings to discuss possibilities of doing anything in the winter?
No, and that's why I...
Parks and Rec.
That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, that's, that's, you should talk for your...
Well, and I almost came to the meeting today. But I felt like I was walking on a little bit of careful ground to try to go into exploring further options for recreation here under the summer rec program report. So I was trying to be diplomatically correct.
Okay.
And felt a little pressured today.
Well, I would welcome you to the next Parks and Recs meeting, which would be the first Monday of next month, on the same day as our, the first Monday, our first meeting at 3 o'clock.
Okay, great.
Talking about that will be in touch.
Okay, well Kathy, thank you very much for a very informative report, and also for all the hard work you did this summer, putting things together. She didn't have a desk in her office, she would sit at various tables. And we'd have meetings, I don't know where we'd get you out to, but I appreciate the hard work. And in light of what has been brought up tonight, I would like to formalize that request at Parks and Recs that maybe we do establish some kind of a task force to look at inventory and accountability, and also the charges that we do charge and see if we can still keep them reasonable, but also maintain what we need to do. And hopefully, we will have a new administrative administrator who can also help in organizing and helping on that task force, Marty. It will always be handed in your lap.
I appreciate that. If I may add one more thing?
Sure.
I was hired around the middle of April. Normally, this position, from what I've seen in the last couple years, has started early March-ish. I know that things were kind of askew for a little bit there, but I can't stress enough that the person coming on for this job, if it's me, great, if it's not, whatever, needs to start early March. Amanda had expressed last year that she had issues trying to find people to cover these programs. Oh my gosh, so did I. And there was an article in Time Magazine in July about the change of summer jobs and who's filling them. And a big, a big part of that is the older community. Amanda said last year that she was going to try to work more with that. Unfortunately, I was running by the seat of my pants most of the time, but that is something that definitely could be a focus for the next summer rec, you know, if it's me, great, but next year, because it was very hard to fill those spots.
I hope that comment was if you're interested.
Yeah, you know, reapply every year.
I am interested as long as it works out for everyone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And I also want to remind the council and the public, you know, as we've just recently gone through all budget areas, we do, as a city, invest a lot in our youth. The 500, some youngsters have had something to do this summer, direct result of what you as a council and as city government have approved. And I think that's an important thing to remember, sometimes get lost in the cloud. I think there's another aspect of this that's important too. As I look through those timesheets, I see youngsters that are often getting their first jobs as coaches and assistants. And I think that's also an important learning experience for our youth and the service that we're providing. And I don't want that to go unnoticed either. So again, Kathy, thank you for your hard work. I think you've noted that we can expand and improve this program, and we will set our mind to make an effort to do that. Thank you again. I'd like to move on in the agenda then to personnel. And I believe that we could take items A through N as one motion to approve these personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to accept personnel, items A through N.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept these personnel actions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move on to committee reports, administrative and finance, Carol Anne.
Hi. I went in today, there were three council members there, including myself and Ms. D, and the mayor. We did a review of budgetary funding request forms and made corrections to re-include a copy of our organization's most recent audit of our financial statements. City surface properties, we reviewed auctioneer proposals. The finance officer and the mayor will have more information at the next admin meeting about them. Economic development was discussed. Maturing of the sewer CD was discussed. We reviewed the finance officer report. The next admin meeting will be September the 5th, that's a Tuesday, because Labor Day is on that Monday, at 1:00 PM at City Hall.
Thank you, Carol Anne. Georgia, could you give us an update on the airport advisory committee, please?
Yep. I, they didn't have any meeting, but I went out Friday and reviewed the new taxiway, which is no completion. All that's really left is grass seating on the old... All that's really left is grass seating on the old entry, and it looks very nice. And I encourage and they encourage everyone to come out for the Bloom Festival. My date is slipped, that's what date it is, but it's August 26th.
27th.
Yeah. So anyway, please come out, they are excited to show you the airport, all the councilmen, especially if you've never been out, there should go in. There are ten parts of this, it's really going to be spectacular there.
Great.
Give the weather a home, son.
That's true.
No go.
And Custer Falls River Regional Waste Management District, Ron.
The next meeting will be September 14th, 7:00 here at the Miller City.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Downtown District Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne.
We've been on Wednesday and Barbara Marie was there. We told her to go ahead with telling the state to continue with the mapping project. There were some questions about the map of the historic district, and I think we got that all cleared up and aren't going to be any changes or substantial changes and they'll get back on track with that. And that's all. We meet again on the 6th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee did not meet. Parks Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Marty.
We met today, 3:00 at City Hall, in attendance were Mayor Cotty, myself, city engineer Tracy Bashkin, Tim Tech, Jared Culligan, Dwight Stanley, Chris Kapke. We discussed the Freedom Trail, confirmed that there's grant money that was acquired, $9,000, which we did determine today needs to be utilized by December 31st, 2017. So Tracy confirmed that they are ready to begin work. They're excited to begin work on that, it would be work on the final segment of the trail, which is from Evans Plunge to Chautauqua Park. So there were certain aspects of that that were discussed as well. Also talked about Mammoth Springs, which is located in Lower Chautauqua Park. And apparently there was a budget item, I believe in 2017, to maybe remove the cover from the springs. It was determined that more research would be needed as far as the source and possible flow of that spring before anything was done to remove the cover. We talked about Welcome Park, which was reduced in the 2018 budget to $1,500, which we're hoping to use. We discussed a volunteer day for beautification and cleanup at the park. And to find out, we need to assess where the Evans Plunge book sign is, which was going to be renovated, so we need to determine the status of that. It was suggested that that be moved to the park where it could be viewed easily. And I will be meeting with Keep Out Springs Beautiful to organize the volunteer day and see what we even do to Welcome Park. We talked about Brookside Park and how best to appropriate the money in the 2018 budget there for irrigation. Tracy's going to put together a materials cost estimate for irrigation system and building materials to complete the shelter. And the goal is to utilize that fund, perhaps coupled with the money donated from other organizations and volunteer out from the community to complete both the irrigation and the picnic shelter perhaps at Brookside. It was mentioned there's currently one picnic table there, and apparently there's demand for more, and it was determined there's a couple picnic tables at the Murph, which I think were used by the demolition derby. So we're going to assess what those look like and perhaps one of those could be renovated and used in Brookside Park as well. Also, it was mentioned we need to take a look at the supply shed in Mother Park, which is in the budget to be rebuilt. And also assess the playground equipment, which was acquired, Budenholz acquired from the city of Lead, and it's being stored in the Army and see where that could be best, suited which park that could be used for as well. And that was it.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Very busy meeting.
Yes, it was.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Harley.
I think I'm going to defer to Kim, there are several subjects that looks like she's going to be discussing at this meeting.
The meeting will be held on the 16th of this month. It's on Wednesday at 7:00 at the City Hall. We're anticipating the first couple of chapters draft-wise of the con plant will be coming through for the first round of reviews by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're hoping that will happen through August, September and October. And our goal is to have at least all the drafts in rough form coming to the city council coming in on November. So this is going to be an ongoing thing until, and it'll come into your hands too, the same way it kind of pieces, so that you're not ever wobbling with an entire thing. That's one thing, we're also going to be having a small re-subdivision application. And other than that, we've not had any other applications, but the start of the review of the con plant is the biggest thing, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Okay, and Kim, could you give just the council and the public an update on the last meeting and the variance request that was considered?
Yes, we did have a variance request to allow a mobile home to be placed in an RA zone. That was unanimously denied with a very lengthy motion to denial, but basically because our ordinance specifically calls out mobile homes as not being allowed in that district, our legal counsel as well as our chairman and board of the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that they didn't even have the authority to go beyond what the ordinance had stated was specifically identifying that as something we did not want in the RA zone.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Public Safety, Bob.
Public Safety met on July 19th, City Hall, Chief Close, Mayor Cotty, myself, the president. We have four old business items that we're still tracking, nothing, no significant changes on them, just to make sure that they continue to get done. One is the streetlights, added to utility roll in an alley, the swine of Rapid City ordinance, the ordinance provisions to dog bite section, which we'll be coming up later, and then working on the emergency reparations plan. New business, the monthly police update by Chief Close, with the increase of burglaries, Hot Springs has been experiencing, is being investigated. Now, the police department has been in contact with the police departments of Chad, Nebraska, Alliance, Nebraska, and Rapid City, and the evidence that has been collected is being processed. Some from that, some positive comments about the overtime for additional officers authorized by Mayor Cotty has been received by the police department. But the police department is still encouraging everyone to increase their awareness of unusual activities in their neighborhoods and report anything suspicious. We talked about the intersection of Highway 71 and the truck bypass. South Dakota Department of Transportation is once again looking at the junction of Highway 71 and the truck bypass to see if additional traffic control measures are necessary to make the junction safer. Someone also asked if we could look at the traffic along the truck bypass during the 4th of July fireworks. Flow of traffic using the truck bypass during the 4th of July fireworks demonstrations will also be looked into, the bypass has become a popular place for people to park and watch fireworks, and there's concern that close proximity of vehicles and people may lead to injuries. That was all we discussed at the meeting. I have a couple other things that I'd like to add, these were brought to my attention after the meeting, so they weren't discussed at the meeting, but the city of Hot Springs received a donation from a gentleman out of Indianapolis, Indianapolis, Indiana. The description of the donation is a donation cash towards city fireworks purchases in honor of the police department. That donation was for $100. In the remarks, the donation was made to recognize the Hot Springs Police Department's professionalism. So thank you very much for that, that was a long wait. I was also looking on the Hot Springs Facebook website, a comment from someone out of town. I didn't happen to catch the officer's name, but I wanted to give him kudos. We just pulled into town and my youngest son got done getting personal. The officer pulled around the block and gave our two boys golden badges. Despite not feeling well, our little one was so excited about his sticker, and my oldest hasn't stopped talking about me yet. We've done some pretty neat stuff in this area, but that was the icing on their cake today. That is a true example of community policing and is exactly what strengthens our faith and belief. Thank you, officer. From Public Safety to the police department, thank you for your efforts with the public. The next meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be August 16th, 2:00 at City Hall, this is the third Wednesday of every month. Public, you go?
Thank you, Bob, and we thank you for remembering those kudos also. Moving on to Public Works, can you give us an update on Public Works, please?
Public Works met last Tuesday, August 1st, City Hall. Tracy was present, Georgia was present, Carol Anne, Mayor Cotty and myself. The only significant old business, I'm sure, two old, two significant old business items. The sledge de-watering device installation is ongoing. Some concrete work's been completed and the sledge press is on its stand. During the installation of equipment, vet bugs were found in the building and an exterminator will need to be hired to get rid of the vet bugs. There was a small reduction in the cost of the air handling pad and summer repairs were necessary to the sidewalk, so there will be an increase to the project of approximately $3,200. Chipping of the brush pile at the landfill, we've been kicking that around for a while, but Tracy brought us some good news. In the past, we had talked about biochar rather than burning the pile or chipping it. There's a process that will take that, those brush piles and reduce them to basically charcoal, which is highly sought after. So using the process of biochar to dispose of the tree of brush piles in the landfill is back before the Public Works Committee for discussion. One of the original contractors interested in converting the brush pile to biochar, but didn't have equipment large enough, would like to talk to the city again at the next Public Works Committee meeting. We're excited because initial comments are they would like to take the brush pile off of our hands at no charge, which would be great. I'm personally excited that it's back as an option available to scrub the dirt. New business items, we talked about a curb on the northeast corner of Washington Avenue that's crumbling. Street department's looking at identifying other curbs that possibly could be repaired and could be completed by city crews. We've been working with the residents regarding sewer backup in another property. City's been working with the resident to identify and eliminate the source of multiple sewer backups. That conversation will continue. And Marty already talked about the Freedom Trail expansion. Tracy had spoken with us about that, and the city will be looking at the necessary steps for expanding the Freedom Trail to Chautauqua Park. The next Public Works meeting will be August 15th, 2:00 at City Hall, Chicago Public Council.
Thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Sam.
All right, we met on Friday, July 21st. The main two things that were discussed at the meeting were the hydrothermal study, which I assume you've all heard about. It's a study to essentially identify hotspots within the valley so that they could set up greenhouses for indoor growing. A scientist was there for the firm that they were hiring to discuss the scientific impacts and possible pricing options. And the other thing we discussed was the industrial park project, which apparently is stalled thanks to some residents who did not want to sell. So they're going to look into ways that they can negotiate a price that will work for everyone. Black Hills Energy has already expressed interest in moving into the industrial park, should it ever be completed. And a couple of things that happened in that month of July were two relocations of businesses to Hot Springs and three business plan facilitations. The next meeting will be on August 18th, Location TBD.
Okay, thank you, Sam. And the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee did meet tonight, and I don't have a report from them. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Next meeting will be 8th of July, 7:00 PM at the Hot Springs Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we do have a first reading of ordinance 1181, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 1119 and 27 to provide changes for establishing adult-oriented businesses in Hot Springs. You do have a copy of that, the proposed ordinance in your package. I would accept a motion to approve the first reading of that ordinance at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1181. Do I have to read what it's for, or is that enough?
That should be plenty. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we approved the first reading. Is there any comments, questions or discussion? I think you've heard a lot of, Kim gave a very, very good explanation of what we're looking at and outlined what's contained in that ordinance. So at this time, hearing no questions or comments, I would ask all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. We also have at this time, Item B, which is a second reading, reading of ordinance 11E, and that's our supplemental appropriation ordinance. And that's allowing us to transfer funds to cover approved financial obligations that the city has taken on. I'll accept a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 11E.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1180.
I'll second.
Okay. Do a motion there, and we do have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Misty, do you have any comments?
Can you tell us the amount again, please?
There's several amounts you have annotated notes explaining them. Total appropriations in the general fund between general government buildings, parks, legal and Mueller Civic Center, $33,469. Source of funding of those appropriations comes from both unassigned fund balance, donations and grants. We are transferring out our additional sales tax fund, $12,000, which is slated for golf course renovation improvements. So in the golf course, you see additional appropriated $12,000 with the source of funding being the transfer in from the restricted cash in the 202 fund designated for that purpose. The sewer fund, the sledge press or sledge de-watering device installation, source of funding unrestricted net position. And the Evans Plunge Fund had an additional appropriation of $1,000, which the source of funding was a donation from the friends of Evans Plunge.
Thank you, Misty.
And there's one more, the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, they have $200 that they are dedicating to help pay for the expense of the garden of memories of the last. You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, ask all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
We need a roll call. Roll call for the second.
The second reading, that's correct, thank you, Carol Anne. I would ask Misty that you'd call roll for the motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1180.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Marty Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartebach?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is Item C, the second reading of ordinance 1182. And I would like to recommend that this goes back to the Safety Committee for a significant change involving nuisance animals. As I received some comments from someone in the public, I reviewed the ordinance this morning and I noticed that it looks as though we need to additionally define what happens to those animals that has been, have been designated as nuisance animals. So with that comment, I would ask if you in the council feel that that is appropriate, that someone would make a motion that we send this ordinance back to the Safety Committee for additional review.
I'll make a motion that we send it back to the committee, I also had those phone calls.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we send ordinance 1182 back to the Safety Committee for additional review. Is there any comments, questions or discussion?
I'd like to make some comments. It appears everybody on the council got the email with their concerns. And I've also had other comments outside of that. What I would like to say to the public is that I share concerns about an ad-
about an animal being put down without a good cause. And I would ask that they go back and read the suggested changes. I think they'll see that that certainly is the first attempt at making sure that the owner and the animal have better opportunities than the original wording does. So that was, first and foremost, was the Safety Committee. I appreciate that some folks still feel that it needs to be worked out a little more. The public safety committees are open to the public. If you have any comments, suggestions, please attend. We value those inputs. As the mayor had said, he also has some concerns that he would like to work out. Send it back to Public Works.
Okay, are there any further comments or questions? Since this was to be a second reading, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote.
I just want to make sure the roll call vote is to table it and send it back to the Public Safety Board for.
That's correct. Yes, that was the motion.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Marty Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen King?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzbach?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Looking ahead on the agenda, we've got two resolutions to consider. First of all, Resolution 2017-14, a resolution renaming Ponderosa Drive to Galveston Heights Street. And what we do have here, the reason for this change is that we do have another Ponderosa Drive in Fall River County. And so we're asking to make that change to help the GIS numbering, naming system avoid confusion with that. I'll accept a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution, 2017-14, rename Ponderosa Drive to Galveston Heights Street.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we rename that street. Are there any questions or comments? You should have the information there in your packages. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have Resolution 2017-15. This is a resolution to support yarn bombing. For those of you that do not know what yarn bombing is...
It's very cool.
It is a form of art that allows artisans to wrap various structures along our public highways and byways with yarn. And it is another way that we can attract people and beautify our, our community. And you do have a resolution there. Notice that there are some stipulations to ensure that those exhibits do remain beautiful and cared for. And we also do have approval for this art form along Highway 385 by South Dakota DOT. So at this time, if someone would like to, I'd accept a motion to support yarn bombing in Hot Springs.
I'll make a resolution to approve Resolution 2017-15, a resolution to support yarn bombing.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move forward with accepting this resolution. Are there any discussion questions or comments?
I did notice them in front of the Artesian. So if you go by across from the depot, if you look, there are some there for you to see too, as an example, but they're rather cute. And I'm glad that it requires that they be kept in good shape because I was concerned that it'd get wet and become tacky looking. As long as that's taken care of, I don't see any problem.
Sam? I was just going to say that I think that's a great idea. I think that's a good idea to promote local art, local artists. Although we can hope that yarn bombing is a fall and garbage bombing.
Are there any other comments? Hard one to follow.
Kim, are you the person that has all the answers?
At this point, yeah.
It talks about not being placed for more than one year. Is that the overall program can only go one year? Or each individual artist can only be in place for a year?
They're anticipating each individual art installation would last about that if, at the worst, I guess at the outside of it. But they're anticipating that if it looks at all shabby, they're taking it down and either replacing it or doing something else. If you Google yarn bombing, it's quite extraordinary what other towns and cities are doing. I lived in two different places that have done extensive yarn bombing and it's quite fun and it really does get a buzz going on social media. And then people will actually come down just to see it. So it is, it is, it is a good thing for us.
So that the program can go for one year, two years, three years?
It could go for as long as they have people that are interested. Yeah?
Thank you.
I have a question is the, so the installation could be pretty much anything as long as it's city, doesn't have to be approved, it could go, it could be city.
Yeah, they're not supposed to do anything that's on a DOT sign. We don't want to get into public safety. Anything that's like a bike rack, a table, a light pole, those types of things can do it. We're asking them to get special permission if they do an electrical box from Black Hills Energy. If they do something that's on private property that's owned by somebody, they get permission from that person.
Great. And obviously no fire hydrants.
No fire hydrants.
Any other questions or comments? Again, hearing none. Ask all those in favor of Resolution 2017-15, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we have several items of new business. I believe that Items A, B and C can be taken together since they do involve very similar circumstances. These are in the back nine edition of the City of Hot Springs. And what they include are some to ensure that the lot line between some duplex units that have been built there be replatted to allow that property line to go down the center of that duplex unit. This time I would accept a motion to accept, to approve that replat of those lots. And they are nine, B9-19A and B9-19B. That would be B920A and B920B and B934A and B934B of the, all of them of the back nine edition of the City of Hot Springs.
I'll make a motion that we rezone those or replat those. So 19, 20 and 34 A and B. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the replat of these lots. Is there any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have before you, in your packages, a possible approval for clean and lean on, or possible discussion and approval of a motion for clean and lean on 238 South Fifth Street. And you can see the information listed there along with the pictures of that property. And I would accept a motion at that time to approve that clean and lean.
Any questions to approve clean and lean on property 238 South Fifth Street?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved that. I'd ask that, Kim, you would give us an update on where that property stands and what the plans are.
Sorry, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
Actually, actually, under the nuisance regulations, I am supposed to be able to just have people come in and clean whenever they're under, under that nuisance umbrella. This is a vacant house, it's been vacant for over eight years. I've been working with the owners that live in California and they just promise me the world and get very little done. We finally were able to, after months of searching, somebody who does this kind of cleaning work that actually pays taxes. So we were able to get that together. My concern was is that this was a substantial amount. We are going to be giving them a bill. If they didn't pay the bill, it goes right on their assessment. So it's nothing that we will, we will be getting feedback on some level. But it was a large enough amount that I wanted to make sure that the city council was aware that that much was going to be coming out of my accounts at one time. And I thought that you would want to know why. They, people who were doing the cleanup actually did it. So they kind of jumped ahead. They did a great job. The neighbors have been thrilled. They had a lot of people coming out shaking their hands. And one little boy asked if they found the football that he lost two years before. So it was definitely a goodwill thing. These people who are doing the cleanups have definitely been energized. We have five more that are in the loop for them to go to and clean up now.
So it's totally done?
It's totally done.
So you have a bill already for it?
It's just what we, I said in the...
Okay.
They cut two now.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question regarding the radio towers. One in the front yard and one in the backyard. Those are still to come down?
We had asked about that and they were afraid of repercussions from the property owner. And I wasn't going to have them push on that. They took down two smaller ones that were unsteady, but these seem to be well cemented in and not moving so that they don't actually pose a risk to the community at this point. And then whenever the people, whenever they get out here, they'll probably want to take them down because they just don't look in concert with the, the house itself. But the house actually starts looking like it's part of the neighborhood at this point.
Can I ask you a question, Kim?
Sure.
Are they going to do something with this or is she just going to sit there for another eight years and then we'll be cleaning it up again?
Well, again, I'm told anything that I want to hear. But what I'm being told is that they want to fix it up and sell it.
He's gone.
Yeah. This was actually part of a very long probing and the people who are firing this is his only son. And his wife went through a long probing with her mother. So they were going through two probates at one time and they got drawn out quite good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, I want to thank Kim for working with the property owners to try to make sure that they're the ones who did the work. And as she had said, the folks around the property that raised the initial concern with her on this table came about this. So thank you very much for doing that for them.
And I also want to highlight to the council that one of the reasons that we haven't been able to move forward as rapidly as we would like is because we have not found abundant individuals or company that would be able to do the work. And now that we've found one, I think we can move forward on several others. And I think it's very much needed. So this is a good first step. And again, I thank you, Kim, for all the hard work you've done on this. We do have a motion on the floor. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion to set a public hearing date for a use permit on review application for a bed and breakfast request located at 846 Omen Street. And we'd like to set that hearing for 7:15 PM on the 21st of August.
You ready for the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to set a public hearing date for a use permit on review application for a bed and breakfast request located at 846 Omen Street, 7:15 PM on 8/21.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set that hearing for this bed and breakfast request. Any comments or questions?
Are we just going to comment that that is the old bed and breakfast stuff there on the...
No, it's not.
Isn't it?
I believe that it is a different, a different property.
That's Neil Miller's house.
Oh, yes.
That would be different.
Oh, okay.
Yet the, the actual bed and breakfast will be in the cabin in the back of the single unit.
That standalone cottage, like you know, next to the garage?
Okay.
So we do have that motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of setting that hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have, you also have in your packages a summary of a change order number one related to the sledge press equipment installation contract. There's four items that have been changed on that. I would accept the motion to approve that change order at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the AD2S change order number one related to sludge press equipment installation contract. Four items changed, that increase of $2,836.07.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do accept and approve this change order, AD2S, change order number one. And the reason for that change order, as you have in your package, there was a path that needed to be moved. That actually ended up being less. They changed the completion date due to the fact that when that, we received the bids for that, they were above that, which our engineering firm estimated. And so we had to get that squared around and that caused a late start. And so therefore requiring later completion date. There was some conduit that was unmarked and has built drawings and that needed to be dealt with along with a broken sidewalk. Are there any questions or comments concerning this change order? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries and that change order is approved. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve the automatic budget supplement of $393,777.75 to additional sales tax fund airport improvement. That's for construction of a partial taxi wave and the revenue that we've received from the federal and state airport improvement grant number listed there in your agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve that supplemental additional sales tax that was received from the federal and state airport improvement grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that automatic budget supplement. Misty, do you have anything that you would like to comment on that?
The revenue's already been received, that's why you're making the motion. We are still anticipating additional reimbursement of the $450,000 approximately additional payment. So you will have another one of these motions when that revenue is received.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of approving that automatic budget supplement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have on the agenda Item H, a possible discussion and motion to set a public hearing for on-off sale wine license and package off-sale malt beverage license for Dolan Midwest LLC, doing business as Dolan General Store. And we would set that hearing for 7:10 PM on the 21st of August. I would accept a motion at this time to set that hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the hearing for an on-off sale wine license and package off-sale malt beverage license for Dolan Midwest LLC and the businesses Dolan General, store number 1A181 for 7:10 PM on 8/21.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we set that hearing for 7:10. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have in your package some pictures and information concerning the donation of 12 various bicycles from the police department impound to the community action. And the reason for that, we can't simply give those bikes away or sell them. We have to donate them to a nonprofit organization. I believe it's by law. And this nonprofit organization intends to sell those bikes to give proceeds to the proceeds that come from the sale to the DARE program in our school system. So I'd accept the motion at this time to donate those 12 bicycles to Community Action.
I'll make a motion to donate 12 various bicycles from the police department impound to Community Action.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we take this action. Any discussion, question, or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a couple of travel requests for you. First of all, a motion and discussion to approve a travel request for Amanda Jensen, children's librarian who attended Children's Book and Awards Committee meeting in Pierce, South Dakota on the 10th of August. I would accept a motion to approve that. You see the travel request in your package.
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded that we approve that travel request for Amanda Jensen. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a travel request for William Wayman, our police captain, to attend an investigative statement analysis training in Pierce. And I think this is very valuable for our police department, help them to improve their investigative enforcement abilities. And Bill will certainly share that with the rest of the police department. You have that package in your folders. I would accept a motion to approve that travel request for Captain Wayman.
I'll make a motion to accept that or approve the travel request for William Wayman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the travel request for Captain Wayman. All those in, is there any discussion, comments, or questions? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, we'll move on to the finance officer report.
Thank you. It is the first meeting of the month, so you received the following financial reports in your packet. And those numbers are through the end of July. And the year-to-date profit and loss summary report that has a little less red than it's had at the beginning of the year, seeing our general fund out of the red, the waste water, solid waste, and Evans Punge, all year-to-date, having collected more revenue than having expenditures. You have your fund summary report, which shows you how the city is doing compared to its plan or the budget, similar to what we just completed, we did last year about this time. And our projections in the majority of our funds seem to be right on target. If you'll notice, the 212 or additional sales tax fund, the year-to-date percentages for revenue and expenditures are extremely high. That's a result of our airport improvement. Those expenses that we were talking about and automatically supplementing our budget for were not things that we had set in stone at the time that we did the budget the year before. But other than that, most of those funds on your budget tax report show that we're right in line with what we projected. Nothing stands out in our review as significant. You have cash balance reports that shows you in our two major accounts that we carry, our cash in Wells Fargo and Bank of the West, the balances separated by fund and in total for both of those. And then also, you have your investment reports, which show by institution and by investment type where all the cash assets of the city are. As always, if you have any questions about any of the information in those reports, we can drill down just as far as you'd like to go. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We did, after three budget hearings, get a 2018 budget hammered out. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the time that you took and your participation in those hearings. I think it was important to have all three. The time is not wasted and we had great discussion and conversation, the public that attended. I appreciate you taking time out of your lives to come. And I think everyone that does attend goes away with an increased awareness of the struggles that the council and the city faces, trying to meet the needs of our community with the revenue sources that we have available. And so, thank you to everyone who attended and helped with that process. 2018 appropriation ordinance will be prepared and ready for the first meeting in September for first reading, just like all ordinances, it will require two and then passage and publication. If you're interested in any updated copies of either both the Excel spreadsheets or the manual software reports, just let me know. I'll have those updated by the time we read the first ordinance. The application period for the city administrator position closed Friday, July 28. We had a total of 11 applicants for the position. Upon initial review, seven of those meet the minimum qualifications. And the hiring committee appointed by the mayor will be reviewing and scoring those seven applicants to determine who will be selected for the next phase in the hiring process. By August 15, the hiring committee will complete their first review. And the next step will involve requesting applicants to respond in writing to a number of questions. My hope is that the process yields a positive outcome. We had some great applicants, both from within our community and those outside of our community interested in the position. And I hope to have it filled just as soon as we possibly can. My job, but it's been a lot of work as a city administrator.
Amen.
For all of us. I'm not the only one who feels that pressure, for sure. The 2016 audit has been reviewed and approved by the Department of Legislative Audit with only two small changes, which will be reviewed at our next Admin and Finance meeting for the 5th of September. Hard copies of those are being prepared by Kato Florstens, our auditor. And once they are available, they'll be distributed to each of you. An electronic copy will be posted on our website. And I'll also share the reports with all the other interested parties, those that we have debt with or interested in our audit reports and some other reporting agencies. I'm pleased with the results of the audit. I grow more comfortable each year with the process and I thank you for your support. We've made great strides, not just in the accurate accounting of our funds, but also the level of controls and transparency. And I'm proud of the work the city's accomplished and I hope you all feel the same. I gave you just a little update on our point-of-sale software since the rollout is complete. I think it's important that you know how the decisions you make impacted us in a positive way. Those of us trying to implement the, all the many different fee collection sources of the city that point-of-sale software has definitely made our jobs easier and it increased efficiency and eliminates errors. So anytime we can do that, it's a positive thing. There is another SDML meeting or conference that's scheduled for anyone interested. I will send out an email to the council. It's held in Sioux Falls this year. It's the 84th Annual Conference of the Municipal League. It's October 4th through the 6th. The theme this year is "Growing Communities from the People Up." If you're interested in going or learning more, let me know. I know it's a far way away. It wasn't rapid last year, so they kind of moved it around the state. So it's not our year to have it closed. And then just to let you know, I'll be out of the office Friday, the 11th, and Monday, the 14th. So if you're looking for me, I won't be there, but I'll be there until Thursday and then back on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Just a few things to report from my end of the spectrum. We keep hearing that Boulder Falls construction is going to start. Last Thursday, they moved one road grader in. It is date put. Hopefully, it will begin moving by this Thursday in earnest. I know that we're getting some concerns from some of the residents, namely one that lives in my house. We're hoping that that will move on. I am a little bit concerned that they're getting a little later start than what they initially told us. So we'll keep on top of that to make sure that goes. We do have some interfaces that we have to worry, be concerned about, i.e. traffic going to the golf course should use, again, the bypass entrance as opposed to the Highway 71 entrance. And also, our golfers will have to be reminded that construction is going on because there are several places that they cross streets. And so we'll keep, I've asked the golf course staff to keep abreast of where the construction is so they can warn the golfers. We certainly don't want anyone getting injured, nor do we want anyone not coming to Hot Springs to play golf either. We do have, we did have the Black Hills Council of Local Governments come down and was going to assist us in getting the GOED grant for the demolition of the buildings on our vacant, two vacant lots. Found out that GOED has chosen to limit those, that grant to only homes, residential areas, which would make our two buildings not fitting the criteria of the grant. I think I'm going to reengage at least one more time to see if there's any way that they will reconsider, particularly if they don't get enough applicants. One of the things that is my honor as mayor is to have the opportunity to welcome groups to Hot Springs. And I had a real opportunity this weekend to show off our city. The first one was a very touching opportunity. It was a Veterans Charity Ride that has ridden from LA to Sturgis. It's a motorcycle therapy group for veterans that are suffering from their experience in defending freedom. We had 20 wounded warriors. And they chose to stay in Hot Springs the night before they rode into, into Sturgis. And I did have the opportunity to greet them and get a chance to visit with them. And both Marilyn and I were very touched and motivated by what we saw and who we met. It's a great, great group. I'd encourage you to look at veteranscharityride.com. They've got a website. And it kind of tells us all about them. And I think it's really neat that they chose to spend the evening in Veterans Town and experience our healing waters. I want to thank Woolies and Chet Coe for their help in getting that arranged and allow that to happen here in Hot Springs. And then Sunday morning, we had a great turnout. Ron tells you, they had over 95 riders for the Fall River Freedom Ride. It's the largest I've ever seen. We had Representative Kristi Noem here. And it was an honor to welcome her to Hot Springs and again, to show off our town and our community and the patriotic pride. It does your heart good to see all those flags going by, waving in the roar of the Harleys. And there are even a couple of Canadian flags. And you know what? They're our allies too, so we accept that. But I, again, thank you for the honor to be able to welcome these groups. And I guess that sums up my report. I would ask now that we do have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and vehicle.
I'll make that motion to go into executive session for personnel and vehicle.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session. Are there any questions, comments?
Do we anticipate action after?
Pardon?
Do we anticipate taking any action after?
I will thank you, Misty. No, I don't anticipate that we will take any action afterwards. It's the most plentifulive session, so... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Misty, please show us how the executive session at 9:34. There will be no actions to be taken. I accept the motion.
I'll send you the jar.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, aye, aye. Quick question. Marty, don't you go in here. I suspect they go trouble Nebraska today.
Oh, you did?
So promoting.
Are you getting...
Actually, I... So I would see your actions. I just think that are listening. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. So, thank you.
You said something. Is that it?
Yeah, that was it. Yeah. Good. Yeah, I'm ready for you. So you just trigger that.